Okay, Jerry, we are live.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. Who are? The town's youth soccer team. Thank you very much for coming. I'd like to. The nation's honor. The boys' scouts or boys' soccer team declaring this day November nineteenth, twenty twenty five, as A H H S Boys Soccer Team Championship Day in the Borough Park Summit, Pennsylvania. On November fifteenth, the Avington High School Boys Soccer Team captured the P I A A Class Three A State Championship, defeating Conrad Weiser by the score of two to zero at North Hampton High School, Manchester. This victory marks the first state championship program history, a testament to the team's dedication, resilience, and commitment to excellence. The comments demonstrated exceptional teamwork, communications, and perseverance throughout the seasons and the championship game with every player contributing and lifting each other up as a true teammates. Therefore, being of sound mind and full witness herein, I officially declare today is A H H S Soccer Ball Soccer Team Championship Day in the Borough of Park Summit, Pennsylvania. We proudly recognize and congratulate the Avington Heights Boys Soccer Team for their historic achievement and wish them continued success and earning off. Thank you very much.
That's awesome.
Boys are all welcome to stay. Jim Smith will have to stay.
Yo. Those comments.
That's me.
We need to disable.
Yeah.
I wish everyone could try that.
Thank you. Congratulations. Fantastic.
Do the comments get reported when they're reporting or they just?
It seems to get recorded.
Interesting.
Just nonsense.
Happy. I don't know what to say.
I'm not kidding.
That doesn't make you just.
Oh, no, no.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
He does not age.
No.
The game's up.
Monday, I realized Thanksgiving.
I bet. Holy cow.
It's very nice. Thank you all for your help and being able to do so.
I've taken a lot.
The cheers of sitting up with the streets. If you don't want to come to us, we welcome you. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
We have Ms. Lopez. Present. Mr. This is my Mr. Macho.
Yeah.
Callie.
Yeah.
Want to. Being having.
Yeah.
She was a solicitor.
Here.
Yeah, but it's worth showing up for it.
It was a good night to come.
Absolutely.
Yep. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. I always bring data.
Thank you very much.
So. It's been a while since I've been in front of this group. I think the last time I was here, we were talking about a what was up for the sewer plant that was out at the state hospital. Remember that? And that didn't go that way, but that's government. What can I say? I always, I always like showing up at council meetings, you know. This may sound a little pokey, but I want you folks to know that I really respect what you do. You know, it's, um, it's not everybody that opens themselves out there to be elected for, uh, for us to serve this way and to serve your community and spend the time that you do. This is America where, you know, this is what it's all about.
Thank you.
So I have the honor of being Clark Simmons or one of Clark Simmons representatives to the Avinson Regional Voice of the Attorney. And I, and I know that there's been an increase recently in the contribution of the borough. But I wanted to come here and give you some context around what's going on at Arwa. So you have some understanding of what's behind the numbers. So first of all, I think everybody knows what an EDU is. And you can see that the, the growth in EDUs has been about four point three percent over the last 10 years from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty six for the municipalities that are part of our one. In Clark Summit, the growth has been about one point nine percent over that period of time, and that's in the red line. And so I think we all understand that most of the developable property within Clark Summit has been pretty much done. Most of the growth is going to be in areas like South End Township, perhaps Glen Burn. And I, as I remember, there is actually a, a hook up opportunity there which has never been active. I think it's maybe just something in the neighborhood of about two hundred EDUs or so. Who knows if they'll ever get around to it, but I think, you know, that was planned some time ago. I said, I got on the board. I realized that that was a possibility. And at the time when I was here the last time, uh, one of the things I did was to really study the capacity of the Arwa system and whether to hook up at that time for the, uh, for the state hospital sewer plant, which was of course feeding or let's say supporting our students at the middle school in addition to the hospital complex. And the hospital complex, of course, has been dwindling over time. The middle school needs to grow. I have a feeling that one's going to come back to haunt us at some point. You know, I've tried to convince the state, if you were going to spend that kind of money to hook up to the, to the Arwa system, maybe the better choice would be, would be to build a new plant and perhaps open up some capacity for ransom rather than considering the online systems that they have. But in any case, um, so I, I, I don't know that there's going to be a big change in the EDU profile over the next couple of years. So I think there's capacity there certainly for years to come. But we have to be cognizant of the growth. It's part of the permanent process that we go through in any case. I also want, on the next page, wanted to just talk a little bit about our revenue versus, uh, operating expenses. And as you can see, back in two thousand sixteen, those lines are pretty broad. And as time went on, they started to grow closer and closer together. So, uh, in two thousand sixteen, operating revenues were three million, three hundred thirty seven thousand and operating expenses were just shy of one point nine million. So we'll fast forward 10 years and it appears that the revenues are roughly about the same, but the operating expenses have now risen to one, uh, three point one million dollars. So this is clearly beginning to squeeze and, but it's to be expected. And I'm going to talk a little bit about why that's the case. Next page is just to look at things like repairs and maintenance. Then, um, in two thousand sixteen, the average expenditure or the expenditure for repairs and maintenance was seventeen thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. The plant's, that was, um, probably, uh, I would say 10 years in and maybe, maybe 15 years in. But roll forward another, uh, 10 years in two thousand and twenty six and our budget projection for the year is two hundred thousand dollars. So there's been a massive type of growth in, uh, in operating expenses or in repairs. You can see back in two thousand sixteen, it was less than one percent and we're now occupied something like six percent of our operating expenses in total. So, uh, and that's to be expected as the, as the plant ages out. The next page, uh, talks a bit about the quarterly contribution, um, uh, to, from the municipalities. And this is from all municipalities together. So what you're looking at is, um, is, is all three municipalities and their quarterly contributions together. And it, it, back in two thousand sixteen, it was eight hundred and twenty five thousand. In two thousand twenty six, it's eight hundred and, at least what's budgeted is eight hundred and thirty seven thousand. We'll talk a little bit more about the development of that. As you can see, the bar graph kind of goes down and comes back up. It's almost U-shaped in a way. So we'll, we'll talk about things like, um, the surplus that is returned to the municipalities, which was in the area of about a hundred and twenty one to a hundred and forty thousand dollars over the last 10 years. Some years omitted, sixteen and seventeen began in eighteen. And, uh, in two thousand twenty six, it was a decision made as part of the budget process not to, uh, to include their, a surplus return to the municipality simply because of the rising costs and certainly and the importance of restoring a capital reserve. You look on the next page. Uh, this deals specifically with Clark Summit. And in two thousand sixteen, the quarterly contribution was two hundred and eighty seven thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. I noticed that over the period, uh, up through, uh, two thousand twenty two, it was on a steady decline. So it dropped five percent in two thousand seventeen, five point five percent in two thousand eighteen, one percent in two thousand nineteen, two percent in two thousand twenty, one point two percent in, in two thousand twenty one. It was about basically even in two thousand twenty two, but then began to rise. The two thousand twenty three, it was two point two percent. One, there was minus point three percent, uh, in twenty four, so it basically dead even. Rose by two percent last year and the current year this year and that we're in today. And in two thousand twenty six, of course, it went off by some, almost eleven percent. So, um, but the, the importance here, of course, is the progression of, uh, let's say total quarterly contributions over the years and, and, and the process of getting to where we are today. So if you would have, if, if it was my preference, you know, at the time, I would have to see it flat, you know, but unfortunately, fortunately or unfortunately, it all depends on how you, how do you like to look at it. You know, I think Arwa, and I've only been there for four years now, as you know, was very conscious about the importance of keeping the rate structure or the rate, the impact of rates low as much as we could. We were enjoying, uh, the early years, uh, in terms of capital life for the plant at the time, which allowed us to keep costs low. And if we returned a surplus or had a surplus, we thought it was good to get back to the boroughs themselves and the municipalities. They were part of the, uh, the, uh, region. Unfortunately, we're moving a bit. So. What's the takeaway in all of this? Increasing EDU base, not huge, but nonetheless still there. And, uh, that's of course creating no pressure on, on the plant. I think we all understand the effect of climate. We're certainly getting wetter, wet, wetter weather these days and higher inflows, which magnifies the effects of inflow and intrusion, uh, which further taxes plant capacity. You know, I, I think all of us know that, um, every time you see a really tough rainstorm, there's a pit of water in downtown Chinchilla and that's all coming downhill, you know, so in fact, I, I see, uh, you know, sure, uh, sure, it's getting popped in some cases and things of that nature. Nonetheless, um, as, as stormwater gets into the sewer system, it makes it even more difficult to deal with it on that basis and further taxes plant capacity. So what we're dealing about with here is an aging capital base, which leads to increased maintenance and equipment replacement costs. And certainly that puts pressure on capital reserves that will need us to prevent major service interruptions. Operating expenses are increasing faster than revenues because of increased maintenance expenses and certainly inflation. We all know where energy prices are going these days. Chemicals have gone up, laboratory costs, and God help us all, insurance, right? I think it's important to, to know that Arwa will spend one point three million this year on capital projects, net of grants. There's eight hundred thousand dollars going into the bio solids field and upgrade and a half a million dollars in a new, new UV system, half of which, uh, or it goes, it's a million actually, and it will be five hundred thousand net of grants. So there's a fair amount of capital going into the plant to keep it running and access efficiency. So the question is, is what are we doing about it? One of the things that I've been really interested in and pushing for year over year is the whole idea of a capital expenditure risk model to look at equipment end of life and service interruption risks. So, you know, how long do these various pieces of equipment that make up the operating infrastructure of the plant? How long do they, they, they last? What's the, what's the lifespan of those, of those pieces of equipment? And then more importantly, if one goes down, is it a two hour fix or is the plant out of commission for two weeks? That's really the issue. And there's some fairly large pieces of equipment. The UV system that we just replaced is a million bucks and we had to change that because the market stuff that was going down. If that goes out, the plant goes down, you know, so. So that's the nature of, of at least the capital expenditure model that we're trying to put in place. So what, uh, Warren Elliott is doing at our direction is coming up basically with a risk matrix that looks at cost and looks at end of life so that we can understand where we, you know, where we need to put replacement costs of capital and how, how, and, and literally project that out over time. And that's becoming clearer now, uh, as we continue to do that. So there's a variety of pumps. There's a number of things in the biosol that's going that we had to fix and so forth and so on. One of the things that we're going to do is continue, uh, the emphasis on obtaining grants for, uh, equipment replacement and infrastructure improvements, which there, there's fair amount of money around, so why not use it? Of course, I think everybody agrees with that. And, uh, we, we don't just accept the prices for energy from E P N L. You know, we're out in the brokerage market, so we would look at contracts pretty actively to try to get the best price there. I think another thing is, uh, the N F has focus on repairs rather than outsourcing. So we save a fair amount of money by having our folks fixing major pieces of equipment rather than outsourcing at the sub factor I do set. It's a pretty skilled group. They, they have good mechanical and electrical skills and, uh, we certainly keep them trained as well as we can. So, um, with that, I think the, the other strategy is to devote the budget surpluses we have to rebuild capital reserves and limit increases in municipal contributions that involves. So that's basically the plan here. So unfortunately, you know, it's kind of what you reap with yourself. And we had been reducing their contributions from the municipalities over the years. And now find ourselves in a position where we should, probably should have softened that a bit. And rather than reducing expenses, holding or reducing their contribution, but holding them the same. And, uh, and now find ourselves in a position where we're trying to dash closer to expenses and projected, um, projected expenses in, in capital replacement. So that's, that's the reason behind it. And I hope that's helpful. Very, very much so.
Very understandable that we just came through.
Yeah. You know, it's, and it's, uh, and I think it's important, uh, you know, that we have, um, the capital available in our reserve rather than going out and, you know, having a bond posted rather than going into debt in some way. Rather have the liquid capital there so that we can immediately respond and get some of these things. But so, so that's, that's really the background. I'd be happy to take any questions if you have.
I, I appreciate you walking us through this. This is very helpful because I know, you know, as we sat down and looked at the budget and we looked at an 11% increase. I know I said, where, why, gee, how, uh, this is very difficult to plan for. So it, it, it does make sense. And I, and I, you know, hindsight of course being 2020, but would agree that being flat to mitigate the need for a big jump, a big level setting jump would be, would be preferable. So I guess I have a question and a thought. My question is, do you anticipate, as the data tells you today, that this is a level setting increase and that we'll settle back in to something more modest next year?
I think that's the mood of the, of the board right now, you know, because, uh, nobody likes passing on increases of this magnitude. Yeah. It's not just the need to explain it, but to me, it was, this, it was really a case of better fiscal management in this case so that you don't have, uh, changes in costs at the, at the municipal level that would result in changes that we would have to make in our operating posture. And that's what happened this year. So that's not fair to you guys. And certainly, uh, we have to do what we can to keep the plant running. But it's practical matter. Um, you know, I think what we'd like to do is moderate that in the future and have a more fiscally responsible, I mean, forecast in front of us. I'm actually an advocate for trying to create as much forward look as possible so that we can find ways to forecast where we're going to be. You know, and I think that's possible. So one of the things that we could be thinking about, and I'm an advocate for is creating a multi-year term budget forecast, you know, to try and see where this is going and build in some of those CapEx risk approaches. So that if we see some large scale, uh, replacement needs coming, you know, maybe in a year or two and it happened to be a variety of about a million dollars a pot, you know, then are we, are we devoting our surpluses in such a way that there'll be adequate capital reserves to replace them without incurring debt and without having to increase municipal participation?
Well, and I, I think the comment that I would then add to that is that when we look at our budget year on year, we anticipate most all of our costs are going to rise two to three percent. And so especially if you're able to, to model that out over five to 10 years and see that a three percent increase every year will allow you to build up a capital reserve to do a million dollar project six years from now.
Yeah.
It, I think that's our baseline expectation is that you're probably going to raise. It, I think that's our baseline expectation is that you're probably going to raise our rate by two or three percent every year.
Yeah.
So, so take that away and and and, you know, share that with the board that happy to. I certainly, from the finance committee perspective, feel comfortable with that. We can plan for that. That's more predictable than a one-time larger.
No, agreed. And, you know, I think there's every reason to believe that we do that with some accuracy. Uh, nobody really can forecast when equipment's going to fail, but I think there's pretty good data out there that would say a pump that's been in service for, you know, ten years, um, has an expected life of twelve, so you better plan to replace it two years from now. At least be at that level, you know, and if it lasts longer, then great, but if it doesn't, at least you're prepared. That's the point. So I hope this has been helpful. You know, I, I'm a data person, so I like to put data out there so at least it's understandable.
And we are very grateful to have you on. We really are. So we would have, um, Center Street. Twenty-five units, okay.
Twenty-five units.
Yeah, that units, so that's going to be beneficial also to, uh,
Well, again, thank you for what you do. Uh, if you ever require any information, just feel free to ask. You know, we've got plenty of it. There's a good board down there, and Lauren is just wonderful as a, as an executive director. And, uh, you know, she really does a great job, so very pleased to have her.
I remember several years back, we like committed.
It's actually pretty interesting. You know, you never really know how this all works out. And the first time I went through it, I was like, okay, I think I get it now, you know?
Yes.
Pretty interesting, but it's, it's very complicated and very involved. Um, the, the equipment is very sophisticated, the science behind it is very sophisticated.
Yes.
And, uh, you know, I give Lauren a lot of credit for marshaling that and building a quick team. You know, certainly, uh, the support that she gives the board. And, you know, I, I think the representatives that we have there from all the municipalities really feel an obligation to make sure that we provide the best service we can to municipalities and certainly uh, do what we need to, uh, to limit the impact that it has. But sorry it's worked out this way, but I just wanted to give you an understanding as to where we're at.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your job.
Yep, thank you.
Take care.
You too.
Okay, the next guy to matter again, we got a carbon. In that Salinas.
Sarah, sorry, sorry. I, I'm just curious if you can give kind of a narrative of what are any material changes from the previous contract? Increases, changes to anything really, just to per context?
Hi, so the personnel committee, we met last Wednesday. Uh, the primary difference is, I believe, for contracts, the previous one was for one year. Um, it is now a two-year contract. Um, there isn't any language in the borough code that has, that it has to be less than two years, and we do now have an active two-year council. Um, the increase will be three percent salary increase for twenty twenty-six, and then another three percent increase in twenty twenty-seven, which is the standard rule. Holiday vacation. Right now, Jen doesn't really have the flexibility to just take vacation time because there really is anyone to filter to do that day. So it ends up getting overly penalized work. Um, so what we did is we wrote in language that any holiday vacation that is not utilized can be paid out in full in December. Uh, the D P W does not have that in their contract, however, they do have the manpower to cover one another when they do take their vacation, and the D P W men do utilize their vacation time. Um, one thing the D P W has though that Jen will not have is that they're able to roll over sixteen. Jen's contract does not have the opportunity to roll over sixteen. Um, the insurance will be the same as the D P W, and her vision, she has an allowance of six hundred dollars per family. And everything else was standard, but what I mentioned were like the primary differences, what might stand out to those that are reviewing contracts. Uh, we are planning on voting on it at the December third.
There's only two.
Yeah.
Well, no, there's, yeah, no, there's only two course.
Um, stepped into a role seamlessly, really.
Thanks, Karen, appreciate it. Necessary to advertise for the event if you're coming here.
Oh, is everything the same? This all the same thing?
The only thing that's different for the polls is hers does have to mimic the D P W. So her salary increase is four percent. Well, she, she got a base salary.
Right.
So I will publicly say it is in the contract, but yeah, she is on a base salary that is less than what Nicole's. I'm sorry.
So ju- just, just for my application, what is the, um, what is the rationale for, for aligning that with the D P W contract? The, the percent increases, is that a, is that by nature of her employment type? Like, I just want to make sure I understand.
Yes. I, I'm the only one with the three. Everybody else has. With the D P W, yes.
And then everything else from there, um, what I stated for that contract, that was the only difference, the increase.
Thank you.
Yep, so we talked about this last time. I did take a picture to try to give an impression of, so this is Grove Street and this is Woodbridge. There is no pole there. So tomorrow morning at nine A M, I'm meeting with P P N L to discuss where a pole would be and what the cost would be to the borough because it's going to be a cost to the borough.
So we are responsible.
But I don't know what. No, well, i- if, if council decides to put a light there.
Okay.
There's no, there's no, uh, requirement for it. So I will have, um, a price, uh, for the meeting. But I just wanted to give you an idea where, where the light would be.
I'll just, I'll just voice one concern I have, and obviously curious to see what the cost is. But I drive, I live on groceries, drive, drop, I drive up and down this stretch all the time. And this is not the only street that does not have street light.
Correct.
Um, I, I, this is by, this is by far like an inventory, but it's probably half and a half. Probably half of our streets that come off of Grove and construction have a street light, the other half don't. So if we put a street light in here, we should at least anticipate that we may need to put a street light in every street. So this is not a one X cost. This is a
Right.
multiple X cost.
Right.
So I, I don't know, you know, then how that is going to impact my own thinking on it. I just want that to be quite clear, and I don't think this is a decision in the backyard.
I know, I didn't do.
As Josh likes to say, we have to go in with eyes wide open.
That's right.
We'd be opening a door, but I, it's an extra.
I use that phrase.
It's, it's also, it's, it's very subjective because there are streetlights up and down that street, some on this corner, some on that corner.
You can't see.
Is it, is it that much darker in another spot? I don't know. I don't know who can render us some, you know, a truly objective opinion on that. I don't know.
Agreed.
And were there other residents stating that they wanted this?
This was the H O A.
Oh, okay.
That sent the, that, that sent the email. Correct. Yep. Also, Jen, I do discuss if this is something that may feel a little area of work. They want to do the plumbing. Right, normally we just pay the electricity. If there was a pole there without a light, we could possibly do something there, but we're, we're talking about a Uh, yeah.
There's, there's one other, one other thing that I, I want to call attention to about this part of Grove Street. Um, this part of Grove Street does not have sidewalks. And if you recall, when Mr. Spats came, uh, speaking about C B B G related projects, he raised that South Avington Township has applied for a multimodal grant to both pave and add sidewalks, basically from where the, not exactly where the library is, but there's, there's, I think, three residences that are in the borough on the other side of the library. But you can tell where the township starts because it's where the road turns to crack. Um, so that stretch of South Avington has applied for a multimodal grant to pave and to sidewalk. Um, this is a stretch of connecting road essentially
That's true.
that does not have a sidewalk. And I think probably more important to pedestrian safety than a street light is a, a continuous sidewalk. So I just want to call that out because it, it, if, we've talked about grant opportunities. If there is any grant opportunity that you become aware of that might allow us to add sidewalk to this stretch, it would really connect. You know, the point that Mark was making is that you now connect the park all the way from the park to the library to the center of town. That's, that, that is what becomes possible. Um, and so that is another consideration on this stretch of road that I just want to call attention to.
Yeah. Yep, the thought, right, certainly. I'll keep my eye on. Well, you're going to vote next, uh, next, it's not next weekend, uh, in two weeks, you're going to vote, uh, we left it up to the December third meeting to see if there was correct. Sounds great.
Champagne would be interesting, right?
Yes, I would just recommend keeping, keeping the brakes pumped on that for now.
Yeah.
Reassessing that in the year once, um, O L P and the Dyessis comes back to us and we can get a little more clarity on exactly how we can get something in there, that protects the borough, um, under that S R O agreement. Um, so there's no liability issues that come back from the department.
I just have two questions. One's for Terry, then, when we interviewed the part-time officer, were we solely interviewing her for O L P or now just?
She's got a strong. I think it's back in this room, she was.
Up the left, the trailer, she was.
So my confusion is, Chief wanted us to vote on it in two weeks, but if you're saying the pump is raised, maybe to not vote up higher? Would we still hire her as part-time?
So the department is still doing, um, a few hours a day at O L P to help out, you know, the department department there. Um, and essentially doing, you know, quasi security there, either two or three hours a day, uh, you know, running traffic and just finding stuff there. So my understanding from that last week, I mean, that the chief was that he's a part-time officer anyway.
Oh, God.
And she is just a good canning. Should this go forward, that we don't have to kind of slow the process down? We already have someone in place.
Do it with more confidence that we can fulfill it.
To say that, you know, because there was those trains that needed to be undertaken, she already has those trains.
Yeah, she already had a lot of special services.
So that just kind of allows, if we are going forward in January or February, it allows us to kind of put everything in place immediately without having to look outside to hire, wait another month, and get that trade done. So she already has all that training, is my understanding.
Yes.
And then we got the borough reacting to ensure that possible additional transfers are available.
Okay. So we're good then to still vote in two weeks to hire because we need to utilize her regardless of pumping the brakes on O L C?
Yes, the O L P, the, uh, what I recommend is just not sign that yet until we have everything solidified with what they're looking forward to, and sure there's no issues for the borough.
I think that he is separately.
So this, you added, I can see you added the, uh, the specific call out about the twenty-seven and twenty-eight rates, right?
Yeah, so the second three A was my only addition. And all that does is allows us, once those mills is decided to double twenty-six, basically sit back down with the fire department, um, to ensure that contract is, uh, there once that this stuff.
Okay. Good, so you're, you're comfortable now with this as, as it's written?
I'm comfortable with it now, that, like I said, it's, uh, we're clear, condition there could fade too, so that way.
Sure.
Now both sides have to act with faith. I haven't seen issues. Um, that way it covers us to negotiate and, uh, get the profit for twenty seventeen.
Great.
Yeah, he will stay, he said, and he said he would be.
As long as the, we spite the devil. She was such, if she was.
Here's that she has all the certification and if you do report all the freight and transfer into that hole, and she has experience being a safety officer as well, obviously being Officer General, but she serves a dual purpose. Really a true asset, and I think she's starting full-time at Stoll.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was going to ask because it, it shows her, uh, she lists her salary as an hourly rate. So I was curious, does that mean she's full-time or part-time? I don't know how they pay their fees, maybe it's not a salary.
She's full-time at Stollman.
Okay.
Uh, but she is more than open to any off time he has, as long as it work with her schedule. She's working. I mean, I'm just American, she's working, and she says she actually loves doing holidays, so that would be a good add to her. Loves working holidays as well, and she's going to do them as soon as January. Uh, the chief just requested that if we were able to vote for her in two weeks, that'd be great to conduct take a policy at that property. I'll be in on her in a new one.
Great.
The one being named stair two is.
Well, that's only if we answer, so I, I just want to be clear to make sure there's no confusion about this. If she picks up a shift, we will not, it will not be to be dedicated to O L P. It will be just to patrol and go through O L P if that happens to be one of her assignments during her shift. Correct? Because we don't, we're, until we, until we adopt that agreement, we will not be collecting any additional money for O L P. So we cannot take on extra shifts
Right.
to patrol O L P until
No, right.
we, we go down that road.
Right, well, until that, we have to sign that agreement prior to O L P compensating us for having someone within the school. So that's what they're looking for essentially, is someone within the school. And what my understanding is now is that parking lot, two hours here, now here, of sitting in the parking lot and running traffic or
Right.
to add additional security as a courtesy, that is not paid for by O L P.
So, so for now, this is an additional officer on our roster to fill out shifts as they exist today.
Correct.
If and when we enter into an agreement with O L P, now we can unlock additional shifts and she's a resource that can. and she's a resource that can work them, in which case we will be compensated for it.
Correct.
Eyes wide open again.
I told them to solidify. She is solely going to be filling.
We don't want to take on. Exactly. We don't want to take on any additional expense that will not be compensated for.
The police department is not adding any additional shifts. If she is maintaining the same shifts, she's going to be a fill-in and she is another asset that we could use.
That's great.
And he said just a lot of the background work that has to take.
We vote in two weeks. It's going to take at least a month to get all the background checks back.
He also let her know that she probably wouldn't be starting until January 2, so that.
And she was fine with that? And she was fine, like the chief assessed her hour rate, and she was more than fine with the hour rate.
She was.
Well, just, I know we're on to the agenda now, but I do not see listed yet on the agenda the resolutions to adopt our budgets. So those obviously have to get added.
Yeah, I think several things for any of the years, right?
There's like, what is it, total of four resolutions or something? Whatever it is, we just got to make sure we get those added.
But will we do that in the beginning?
The resolutions?
Yeah.
They would likely fall under fault business.
Just all, okay.
Even if you want to add one to just, you know, says number seven. Just to resolutions for budget.
Okay.
Just to submit them.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, thanks, Fred.
I'm sure you would have figured it out between now and then.
Yeah.
Take the S R O off. Yes, 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 yes. And we'll take it up there. Okay.
The chief can talk about if he wants to. But he can at least take it off.
Okay, okay. Okay, we'll leave it there and take it up here. Okay.
Have a great Thanksgiving, everyone.